Okay, good evening, everybody. Please take your seats. We're gonna start now. It's 7:17. And this is the special meeting of the Board of Directors Thursday, August 30th, 2018. Carl, could you please call the roll?
Rabbit, here. John.
Here.
Marat, here. Luis. Louis. Louis.
And Carl is here as well, so we do have a forum. The first item in the business is the replacement of the Vice President. I would like to nominate Richard Rabbit Young for the position of Vice President. Is there a second? Anybody wanna second that? Carl seconds it. Rabbit, you accept? Any other nominations on the board for Vice President? Hearing none. Congratulations. You have a new Vice President. Perfect. Okay. Next item on the agenda is property management and bookkeeping. Now, most of you are probably aware, I sent out an email last week regarding the fact that Dan, our property manager for the last two years, resigned citing some health issues and other items. And it turns out that we have been looking for the last couple of months for a replacement for Campbell. We've had a number of issues with Campbell property management, which since 2015 has been handling only the accounting slash bookkeeping. So with the help of Kirk, as well as Bob, who's actually on Skype right now and listening in, we identified a few companies. We liked one in particular that we invited today as Condominium Concepts, and they'll be introducing themselves shortly. It turns out that they also do property management. So when Dan resigned, we reached out to them again and said, asked them if they could send us a proposal to include property management. And they did that, and they have some copies. You brought some copies tonight for the board? Yes, perfect. That we will be reviewing. Give the board, as well as the membership, an opportunity to ask any questions about that. But at this time, I'd like to ask both of them to come up to the lectern and introduce themselves, give us their names and titles, and then do their introduction to the membership and the board. If you could just pass the contracts to the board.
I'm Marlene Burgos. I'm the Regional Vice President of South Florida.
Could you grab that mic? That'd be great, because that way we can pick it up on the video.
I'm in Florida, like a lot of you guys, I feel you can hear me.
No, not yet. We have somebody on the phone, so...
Fantastic. My name is Marlene Burgos. I'm the Regional Vice President with Condominium Concepts Management. I cover South Florida, and I've been in the business for about 18 years. Started with a company, maybe one or two properties, and just worked my way on building South Florida. Over here is Nancy Ayala. She's one of my property managers in West Palm. And just when I got the call that they need full-service management, or they were looking for that, that very same day, when I received the call, I presented Nancy with the offer to move to Fort Lauderdale and this area and just be the manager for this property. Same token, she was looking to relocate anyway, so it just worked out.
Hi, as you said, I'm Nancy. I've been a property manager since 2009, and I've been with CCM for the past the most six years. I've managed various portfolio to onsite, so I think I've dealt with a lot of challenges, and I think this will be another challenge.
Okay. At this point, could you go into the contract, the general terms, in terms of, just go through the salient points of the contract, so the membership, as well as the board can understand and then ask questions?
Do you want me to point out the points that Bob has sent to me since...
Oh, yes.
Okay.
So there's been a little bit of correspondence over the last couple of days with Bob, our Treasurer, who went through the contract and identified different issues that he wanted addressed specifically. So that would be a good starting point, if you could go through that particular email that he sent you and just go point by point.
Okay. The first item was just a matter of taking the word condominium out, which we did, and adding in the two units, because we missed one and we put 830. One of the items that Bob and I discussed was banking. He wanted to know if you guys can use your existing bank accounts. I asked him if there was ever any custodian management company involved in those bank accounts, because typically, management companies are the custodian. They might not be signers, but they might be the custodian. And if that's the case, you would wanna take everything out from the dumb being custodian. I did tell him that it would be more difficult, depending on the bank, to have the operating account with your existing bank account because of our pay lease, which is online access. And it's the operating account that we would use with the bank that we use, you get free bank charges, and it downloads to a certain lockbox. Now, the reserves, you can keep it on any bank you would like. So I just suggested that we'll find out what bank accounts you guys have now, what are you banking with, and we'll have to contact them to see if it's feasible to just stick with them.
What bank?
What bank are you using?
Pacific Premier. So the lockbox is in Miami, which they just download into our software, which is Tops. So I think a lot of you guys are familiar with Tops and how your ledgers look already, which is easy.
Well, Marlene gets bounced around a lot, but I'm not sure if they've actually seen it.
No, okay. Well, the ledgers are really easy to read. That's what's important to you guys. And we also have a website where you would go in and you could see your balances. So it is user-friendly. Question number five was the onsite employees. He wanted to know if you guys should keep some of the employees as part of the association. My response to that was, in order for us to provide them with insurance, health benefits, and so on, they all have to be part of the management company. So that was one of the topics that we hit. His concern with that was the 5% finder's fee. If we leave the property, there's 5% finder's fee if you wanna keep any of the employees. So on the contract, I put down that that does not apply with any employees we inherit. So your employees will continue to stay with you if we were to leave with no finder's fee. But Nancy, for instance, is a manager that we'll be bringing on. She will be, 5% finder's fee if you decide you're going to keep her. So I put that in the contract.
Bob, did you get that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We went through all these pointers, and I'm glad we did, because the connection goes back and forth. Number seven was the minimum of employees is stated in the contract. We don't have to hold you, or you hold us liable for that. That's just, we have to put that in for Florida statute. We just gotta put minimum employees. Bob suggested I put one, but I said, "No, no, he might hold me to that. Nancy, you run the property by herself." Let's see, what else? Schedule one is something that I think should be discussed by the board. That, number nine, meaning, when does the management company start? My understanding is you have to give Campbell notice, 30 days' notice, so that's something we need to discuss as far as, when do you want CCM to start? Because as you know, we're full service. Meaning, we do the accounting, the bookkeeping, and the management of the property.
So if we decide to go with you, today would be a good time to vote, to give the 30 days' notice. And it is, I think it is 30 days. But Bob, can you confirm that? I know you've studied their contract as well. Is that right? Was it 30 days? I'm pretty sure it was, but you've seen their... Right, okay.
Bob and I spoke, and we suggested midpoint as far as, he didn't wanna have to pay two companies. So I suggested, we suggested, we spoke about giving them 30 days' notice. Let them finish September. We can come in, second week of September, and work at the back end without charging you guys till October 1st. So that way, we can work in the back end here already and just starting, and then the accounting will start October 1st. It'll make it a smoother transition, actually. The last part was the Tops software. I'm hearing that you guys own Tops. Maybe you can help me with this? But Tops is an accounting software, and you require a license. So if you purchase Tops, you've paid lots of money for it. So then you might have just owned Tops then. So if that's, we just gotta get into that, we have to find out. Okay, we gotta look into that. Because that's what it really is, the $50 charge is a licensing fee. So we'll have to look into that, because if you do own it, we use Tops. And it's a matter of the download. It's great when you're transitioning from one company to another using same software. It's really easy. And that was the pointers we have with, that I went over with Bob and on the contracts. So the contracts that I gave out is all revised per the discussion that we had, Bob and I. Just to...
No, go ahead.
Just to give you a little idea of how we start transitioning, we gather information about the property, and then Nancy works off of a checklist that we have. And one of the very important first items we do is mail a notice to the vendors, all vendors, letting them know that we're here. And the second notice is to all the owners, letting them know where to make their future payments. So as the transitioning happens, first thing we need is the list of the owners to get that started, and the vendors. We meet with the board and go through a priority list, too, so that we can understand your wants and needs and what's priority first and foremost. And I can say, Nancy, you know, every manager has their strengths and their weaknesses. Her strength is the whole construction part of it, the defect part of it, preventative maintenance. That's first line.
Can we ask questions?
First, let's see if there's any questions from the board, or Bob. Anybody on the board? I have a couple, but let's start with other members. Bob, you pretty much had all your questions answered? The connection is a little bit spotty, so... Bob, can you hear me? Do you have any additional questions, or were they all addressed?
I think they've all addressed. We need to, obviously, you know, finalize everything, but, you know, the reality is, I see Condominium Concepts Management, they're excited and empowered to have International Village as a client of theirs. You know, we've had a lot of discussions and done our diffilages on them. They don't wanna let us down, and we don't wanna be let down. We've had some bad experiences with other management companies in the past, and, you know, we've worked a lot over the years. You know, at first, we were looking at really just the back office, the accounting, because we weren't really happy with Campbell management. And, you know, looking at Condominium Concepts Management, it looks like they can provide both the front office now with Dan departing, as well as the back office to do a really good job for us. You know, over the years, you know, we've lacked true professional management, and, you know, it's showing in the village, and it's time for change, and now is the time for change. So, you know, we, I think the board has done their due diligence, looking at a number of different options. We looked at internal management, we looked at external management, we looked at a number of different external managers. It looks like Condominium Concepts Management will do a great job for us, and it's nice to see that they, they're empowered to do a good job for us, and they don't wanna let us down, and we don't wanna let, we don't want to be let down. So I'm excited to be able to move forward and hammer out a final deal with them.
Okay, great. Well, my question first, for both the elus station of the board, as well as the membership present, is, can you explain the management fee and how that would work?
The management fee is, the price of the management full service is $6,000 a month. That takes away your accounting fee that you pay now to Campbell. That, the staff is the same way. The staff will belong to the management company, so my prediction is that your insurance will go down somewhat, because the employees will be off of our workers' comp and benefits, and we have a great benefit package. And the CEO of the company comes in quarterly and visits the property, so you will see her. And myself, I'll be here, of course, in the beginning, every day, with Nancy, getting it started, but minimum twice a month. So that's also part of the management fee.
And before I open it up, I want to, Bob, to address this issue. Bob, you're more familiar than any of us with the budget, obviously. Can you kind of tell us, based on your analysis? Because I think this is a question that most members are probably concerned or interested in, is, will this result, in your opinion, in overall savings, or will it be the same under this new management company if we decide to go with them versus what we have now?
Okay, well, that's an excellent question, John. And of course, being the Treasurer, that's my top priority and focus. You know, with all of the analysis that I've done, it's, at the worst-case scenario, we'll be break-even to what we're spending today. And so, you know what? If we're break-even, we're, look what we've got. We've got, we're gonna have professional management, we've got resources beyond what we currently have today. We've got professional accounts receivable collection on a monthly basis. We're gonna have, with the sales and the sync application and protocol and approval process will be top-notch. So, you know, and I'm looking at it, in a worst-case scenario, I see it be break-even. On a best-case scenario, I think Condominium Concepts Management can add a lot to our village, because we spend a lot of money. And with their resources, good decision-making, good sourcing of suppliers, I would like to see us actually save up to $75,000 or even more per year by engaging the company. So I have no negative comments with respect to financial impact on the village. And I think, I think we're gonna be much better off.
Okay. I'll open it up to the membership now, and then if the board has any follow-up questions that occur to them in the course of the discussion, we'll do that. So, yes, Marcy?
Okay, John, if I remember correctly...
Can we get a mic? Well, actually, one of the staff...
John, if you remember correctly, I had spoken one time with Bob with reference to us, to us doing the accounting internally. So what I'm hearing is like $6,000 a month to do the accounting.
No.
What was...
I think she's saying both, combined.
Oh, combined, okay. I mean, is there a reason why we can't do internally, enter the people down in the computer, all the companies in the computer? I mean, that is not a difficult thing to do. I mean, I've done that many times before. And we can do that with the bills coming in and having them, okay. The second part of that is, the employees that currently work here, if they're going to be under their leadership, is it going to start over again for them, for their insurances? One second. You know, as far as their time here, how many years they've been here, et cetera. We don't want them to lose out on anything like they've done in the past.
Okay. Could you just, and George, could you take the mic for any other questions that come up? And you can keep that one.
As far as the health benefits, it's gonna be 60 days. The board can decide to pay their Cobra for the 60 days, which you guys pay insurance already. And the seniority, as long as they've been with the company, with you guys, they'll keep their seniority. We don't have to start from fresh.
So that means the insurance company, so they lose their insurance?
If the board is paying the insurance already as an association, which you guys are on a monthly basis, you can just pay their Cobra.
Okay, so that means you don't know what we have now in insurance versus what they're going to be getting. How do we know?
What do you have now?
Oh, I don't know what they have.
We don't have insurance.
Okay, thank you. So you would have significant insurance after 60 days?
Let's go started, we don't have insurance now.
Okay.
We don't have it.
So the employees would...
We don't have insurance. Any employee, they don't have insurance.
So the employees will, they better off with the medical package, medical debt, tuition, vision, 401K, vacation time, the home works. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So that, I'm sorry. So, well, Bob's analysis, according to his analysis, the cost will be the same or less, in spite of the fact that we're offering more benefits, we're still able to save money versus, I mean, compared to what we're doing now?
Yes, I mean, like Kurt just said, the taxes and the benefits are going to be, we don't up-charge the association for that. Exactly what you're paying, the insurance, is exactly what you're gonna get charged for. There's no up-charges and not-paying fees. And they have full benefits, and like Kurt said, it's gonna attract more people to come wanna work here.
So it's a signal that you currently have. Are we going to add our people onto that one, so that you have a larger group?
Exactly. If the association had insurance right now for these employees, I can guarantee you it was much more expensive than paying with the management company insurance to the employees, because it's a larger group, as you said.
Question, the $6,000 a month, what does that include?
That's, I, it's an accounting fee, it's the management overseeing, the corporate office does the accounting, we have a regional supervisor, meeting supervisor that will come on, the CEO comes, I'm here, that's what it includes.
Does it include the managers' salary?
No.
So if we were to do our own in-house accounting, then that $6,000 would be eliminated?
No. We don't do, it's a package, it's full service that we do. We're not gonna come in, I'm gonna tell you, in our history of being in this business, you let homeowners go ahead and put in the accounting stuff. You might be honest, but the next person might not.
Well, we can say the truth about the management company, too.
Well, we're bonded and insured. We have $5 million in insurance.
You're talking about, you're talking about somebody that would come into the office and enter those...
With our system, nobody has to enter them. They can get mailed in, they can be paid online.
I don't wanna volunteer doing that work.
You're putting a liability on someone else that's not insured. And DNO insurance is not gonna cover if that person steals from you.
No, it's not a job for a volunteer.
I can do it in my power.
It's not a job for a volunteer.
Kurt, you may not feel that it's a volunteer job. I don't have a problem doing it, I've done it in the past.
From the association standpoint, it's not worth the liability.
Not personal. It's not personal.
It's a risk assessment.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. You're making a wonderful presentation, but this other lady's gonna be a property manager. I'd like to hear from her directly.
Well, pretty much like Marlene said, that I basically focus a lot. I've learned a lot throughout the years with the construction, with the plumbing, with, I've dealt with a lot of things. I've dealt with problems with restoration. We've dealt with many things. So I think, I know that the board has a priority list and it'll come out, and I think there's a lot to do on the outside of here to try to restore a lot of the beauty that is already here. It's just unfortunately, it needs to be upped, kept, in other words. And I think that that's where I may come in and help out, in that aspect. And basically, also, maybe organizing the group that we have, the maintenance group, working with them, accomplishing the things that need to be done. Going in, also, of course, keeping up with the violations and so forth that needs to be done, to follow those, I should say, those owners to follow the rules and so forth. So, I mean, there's a lot. But, you know, we're ready for the challenge.
Just to interrupt real quick, we had another board member just joined by the phone, Luis Jimenez. You had another question? Go ahead.
For the bookkeeping, I had a question.
By the way, this is one of the office workers, the receptionist, Tri Lee. Go ahead.
I just had a question. What were your plans to fix the accounts that are currently in Campbell's? We get multiple complaints, I'm gonna say daily, to the office about late fees that should have been applied, payments that were received late that actually weren't, the process of getting checks on time, and things being added to the ledger, payments being added to the ledger correctly, correct notes, like the account, the account ledgers that we have now are just, just the details of them. And Campbell has been with us since 2014, and if you were to print out one ledger and actually take a look at it, you would literally be like, "What is this?" And for me to receive majority of the payments in the office, it's like kind of hard with working with Campbell and trying to get these things fixed, because they don't know the background, and have to be accounted with the attorneys or pending legal, like what are your plans to get into the ledgers and try and fixing that and fixing all this? Like what are your late fees for the owners?
The late fees are the late fees.
Okay.
It's for the documents.
Okay.
We can't just make up, we gotta go by the documents of what the late fees are. But I'm glad you asked that question, because I was gonna say, it would be so much better for you guys to come into the office and make one phone call, opposed to someone in the office saying that Campbell did this, or we don't know why. We gotta make a phone call to Campbell and figure out what they did here. This is gonna be a one-stop shop, having a full-service management company. Now, my strength are numbers. That I love to do, and I do it in my sleep, and that's to break apart a ledger. And that's exactly right. We have to get the ledger, which you say 2014 is pretty good. I'm very good at reading ledgers. I would sit with the assistant, school member, so that we can go through ledgers that are in need to be reviewed. And I like to clean them up.
I'm not exaggerating.
I, I'm ready for it.
I have a stack of papers.
And we will get through it.
And it's like, the back charges and the payments that were lost, back in August of 2016, there were some payments that were lost in the mail due to the hurricane. And to this day, they're still trying to figure out where those payments are, and they're trying to reach out to the money order companies to see if they can get refunds for those money orders that were lost, because they did come up that they weren't never cashed. But the money order companies are like, you know, taking their sweet time, and out of the 15 that complained that the things were lost, I'm gonna tell you, only four have came into the office to clear up that, and most of these ledgers are still showing that they owe for that. So, you know, Campbell has done their part with that, but, I mean, like mistakes like that. And most of the owners here are not so computer savvy, so, you know, they have property managers and people like that to make the payments for them. But most of the owners here, they're used to making payments through checks, or they do auto-generated payments. Do you guys offer auto-generated?
Yes, we do the auto-generated payments, mail the checks to the lockbox, pay online. You know, we try to avoid them dropping it off here, but let's face it, a lot of people don't wanna throw it in the... don't wanna throw it in the mail or get online.
You know, you never know where, where it ends. And I tell people all the time, you know, you can send it certified, track it, but some people don't wanna go to the post office, they just wanna seal the envelope and drop